Okay. Let's begin with prayer. The Lord be with you.
And with you.
Let us pray. Almighty and ever living God, ruler of all things and heaven and earth, hear our prayers for this parish family. Strengthen the faithful, arouse the careless, and restore the penitent. Grant us all things necessary for our common life and bring us all to be of one heart and mind within your holy church through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Here's a quick look at our agenda for today. We've got several presentations. The bulk of the time will be spent with the task force and hearing about their work together and their recommendations that the Vestry adopted at the meeting this month. We'll also be sharing a timeline of how things are going to hopefully unfold so that everyone can have a sense of where we're going, what is happening, and have some kind of guideposts along the way to know that things are progressing and we're getting very close to being able to be back together again. Few tips for this. Put your screen on speaker view that will allow you to see the entirety of the presentation and open the chat. Please do keep yourselves muted during the presentations. Turn your video off if you don't want to be recorded. And if you have a question for the presenter, Joy is going to be serving as moderator and can and can ask the presenter your question for you. But we'll also have time for general questions at the end. So just know that that is coming as well. Again, quick reminder on our communication guidelines. We are living in a time of crisis and stress is high. So please remember to be gentle with yourself and others. Be kind, ask questions to seek understanding or clarification. Try as much as possible to use I statements and always assume good intentions. Before you speak, think, ask if your words are true, helpful, inspiring, necessary, and kind. Okay. Think we've got. Is everyone muted? All right. So I'm going to dive in very quickly with the results of my listening campaign. If you'll recall, last year I spent about six months just talking with you all. And it's something that I wanted to do from the second I accepted this call. And I've been able to put some of the things that I heard together for you to hear as well. Through this process, I wanted to listen for the movement of the Holy Spirit among our community because that kind of helps me not only to know what's percolating, where your hearts and minds are, but also to get a sense of what God is calling us to do. And I think that came through. So I wanted to share some of that with you today. I met with 74 of you, which is awesome for 30 minutes or more. And that represents about 60% of the parish. So it's great. And I got some really good feedback from you. Just some quick numbers for your information. Y'all are long-term members by and large. About two-thirds of you have been at St. David's for 20 years or more, which is, I think, an important thing to note. Also, about two-thirds of us come from the Episcopal or Catholic tradition. So that tells us some important things about liturgy and theology and kind of that perspective that draws us together and where we're coming from. I found our community to be very diverse. One of the things that really struck me is that a lot of people have a connection to disability, either through themselves, through a family member, through a child, through a loved one. And I think that that's really unique about St. David's and something for us to celebrate and really focus on. I heard lots of stories of connections with alcoholism through AA and general addiction as well. I heard connections with mental illness, losses to death by suicide, and also families that have faced incarceration of a loved one. Y'all are widowers, divorcees, children caring for elderly parents and multi-generational families living under the same roof. We've also got members of the LGBTQ community. And I heard several people mention that there isn't really a community for those folks here at St. David's. So I think that's an important thing for us to be aware of as well. Why do you come and stay at St. David's? You told me that people here are loving and friendly, welcoming and nice. You felt that the atmosphere is open and relaxed. Multiple people called this a family-friendly church, even though people noted that there aren't a lot of children here now. But you still felt it's a good place for families. And many people told me that St. David's is my family and that my friends are here. There's lots to like about St. David's, I heard. You really like the liturgy. You like that it's a blended service. Several of you told me that you like having a women rector once again. You really like the music. You love and appreciate John Mark and the choir and really find that to be an important aspect of our services. Programs and outreach came up over and over again, especially the Daughters of the King and Curcio. Those were by far the two most mentioned programs and an important aspects of our life together. You also had shout-outs for crucial members of our community. And I think that that's really wonderful as well. And I appreciate how honest people were with me because even though I didn't specifically ask, concerns came through as well. And I appreciate the trust that you all shared with me in sharing these stories. The history of conflict in this congregation came through loud and clear. I heard stories of yelling and name-calling in meetings. I had people tell me they will never serve on a vestry again because of their experiences in the past with that. I had people tell me that they were aware of conflicts over time and just chose to stay out of it. And I think that that's a really important dynamic to be aware of here, that we've got folks that tend to be drawn into conflict. And then we've got folks that just, you know, want absolutely nothing to do with it. These two quotes really struck me and I want to share them with you because I think they're really important. One person told me that there are priests who have done irreparable harm to this parish. And someone else told me that in 12 years, there have been five priests, and it is only partly their fault. And I think that both of those statements hold a lot of truth for us to pray and ponder. I also heard a very crucial divide. There was lots of folks who want to see the church grow and welcome families and young children once again. There's no doubt that there's a strong intention of people that that really is where your heart and mind is right now. But there's also a pretty substantial group of people that told me, I don't want the church to grow. And I really just want to focus on those of us who are here now.
I really can't.
And I want everyone to know that both of those ministry paths are valid and are paths that we could take. But they're also not really compatible with one another. So these are things that we really need to think and pray and talk about as we move into the post-pandemic world. I heard folks worry that we're just doing too much, that the same people do all the things and that folks are getting burned out. And I did hear a high level of burnout from lots of people. I also heard a lot of concern about the food pantry ministry, that while many people appreciated it, that there were also concerns with how it was being run, the kind of toll it was taking on the community and the property and that there was a separation, people felt, between the congregation and the pantry and the clients, and that that was really concerning to them. A sort of shadow side to our congregation also emerged, a shadow side being what we can't see ourselves, right? Some people told me that they felt that visitors felt smothered and overwhelmed, that parishioners here tend to be opinionated and that that causes conflict, that it's hard for people to disagree with one another and that conflicts escalate quickly. And that the feeling that the parish tends to make bad decisions due to misinformation. But also, I heard lots about the rumor mill and that that tends to be a problem at St. David's, which is not uncommon in churches for sure. But I had several people tell me that they felt that parishioners just don't collaborate very well, that a lot of people are used to doing things on their own without asking for permission. And that can lead to the sense of being very dispersed and that there isn't sort of one direction or way that we're moving in together. Hopes and dreams. Oh, I loved hearing about your hopes and dreams for the church because everyone has those. Lots of folks want children and families and a large Sunday School and youth program once again. People hope for better marketing, social media, and a continued online presence. A lot of you told me that you like having so much available online. And so we've got to keep that going forward. You want outreach and volunteer opportunities to continue. A lot of people lamented that they want more buy-in from people, you know, more participation and more hands to do the work, so to speak. Some told me that they really want drastic changes post-pandemic. And others were really clear that they just want to go back to what was. And again, those are divergent positions as well. Kind of in summary, it's clear that you would like a future with less conflict, more stability, a financially secure outlook, and a unity and direction and purpose. Multiple people voiced a desire for one clear direction and for everyone to be unified around it with a dedicated leader to guide you to it. So that's what I heard. And I have to add that since then, I kind of wrapped it up last October. A lot has happened. We've lost two people to moving on to the eternal life. And we've had six that have left the church either due to moving away or to conflict. So that's unfortunate. We've got our food pantry that is now closed. And our outreach ministry is going to be re-envisioned as a service and justice committee with a new mission and a new orientation and purpose. So there's a lot to be hopeful and look forward to. And I think that we've had this incredible opportunity now to have our task force comprised of Jean Hemingway, David Priest, and Deacon Nancy to kind of pick up where this listening campaign has left off through listening to groups of people and focus groups. And here where we can take this, here where we can now move folks into the kind of post-pandemic world. So with all of that being said, I've not been monitoring the chat. And we've had new people to join us. This is true as well. And Jean is going to have something to say about that later. So I will now like to invite David and Jean and Deacon Nancy to tell us about the task force report.
Jean, you need to unmute.
It keeps going back and forth, I guess, when I set something on top. Forgive me. I'm going to begin with just a brief prayerful reflection about the report that you're going to hear. Declare his glory among the nations, his wondrous works among all people. Heavenly Father, as we gather in this special time today, let us be nourished and enriched in our desire to be led in new ways of sharing your light with others. Let us breathe deeply into your reassurance that you are beside us and will help guide us through this transforming time. Equip us with the courage and faith to engage on a new path to share your wondrous works in love with our neighbors, being open with hearts and minds. Let us find a healthy balance in our community life. Help us listen and be present in the spirit. Help us weave through our to-do list, never forgetting who we are in God and why we were here, why we are here. Shed new light on us as we enter this phase of new growth in the life of St. David's community. We give thanks for the strengths we share in living with compassion in the ministries we carry out. We acknowledge your grace and guidance in the gifts that you have given us, the gifts of having courage to see, courage to feel, and the courage to act on what you would have us do. Give us, we pray, an even deeper sense of what you are calling us to be at this time to your honor and glory. Amen.
Thank you, Jean. If we go to the next slide, please. And just a reminder that this was the task force assignment. And as we started on this assignment, one of the big questions was, what are we going to do with the food pantry? And as a task force, we looked at that question and said, how are we going to judge what happens with the food pantry? What is the criteria? And we ended up taking a bigger view of how can we evaluate all of St. David's ministries and programs? And what would be the criteria that would be applied to those? What would be a goal that all of these programs could be evaluated in? And so we did take a bigger view. We had individual interviews with a dozen or so prominent members of the church. And we had two town halls where we gathered comments from those who participated. So we tried to be open and available for comments. So this is the result of that process. And it's a starting point. It's not an answer to all of those questions. I would also like to thank Phil Lovelace for his wonderful message this morning, which exactly dovetails with what we as a task force identified as one path forward that we recommend. And that is to partner with other churches, other faiths, and other community organizations in Claremont to strengthen our standing in the community and to let people know what kind of a place we are and what our beliefs and our programs are. So next slide, please. So these three slides are kind of the past, the present, and the future. The next three slides, I'm going to go through them, all of these slides, pretty quickly. They'll be available to review afterwards if you like. So let's remember and celebrate the great history of St. David's, that our legacy in the neighborhood is that we are first to change and respond to social progress, whether it's women pastors, LGBTQ community, and so on. We advocate for the underserved and the oppressed through our programs. We reach out to people in need. We're a leader in service to our neighborhood through CCSA as an example and helping to establish that. And that is still a strong program that we can tie into. We provide vital support to our own members when they're in crisis. And that's something we should celebrate. And we're recognized for our leadership in the diocese and all of those areas. So we need to tell people what we're doing and bring them in because this is the church people are looking for. Next slide, please. We face change before. Founded in 1955, our building burned in 1991. And we were closed by the pandemic in 2020. So this is a third time of renewal. What are people looking for in this time of change? They're looking for support. They're looking for answers. They're looking for calm and they're looking for community. And how can we respond to that? This is an opportunity. Next, please. And what is our future? What we heard is that people want to have a vision and to move forward boldly, but not to lose our identity, to remain a place of safety and healing, to continue our outreach and advocacy, to improve our connection to the neighborhood through those programs and to be an asset to our community. So we are doing Jesus' work in our own place. Next, please. So our first recommendation and what we heard from many people is assure the safe, comfortable arrival and settlement of Pastor Jocelyn and her family in San Diego this summer. Next. Let me emphasize, these are recommendations from the task force. They've been accepted by the Vestry, but this is just the start of what we're trying to recommend and advocate for. So this doesn't have answers, but it has some suggested steps to reach these recommendations. So under recommendation one, to review the cost of moving, have a transition plan, adjust the budget as necessary, provide assistance in locating housing, provide assistance in moving as best we can, and to plan for the arrival of our new pastor with our member support, as I mentioned, but tying that into publicity and celebration of her arrival. Next, please. So after that, I mean, that definitely was the desire that we heard most from the people we talked to. But then the task force recommendation is that we get to know St. David's neighborhood and know what their needs, you know, the people who are there, where they work, what are their needs, desires, pain and sorrows. Next, please. And so how can we raise the profile of St. David's in our neighborhood, in Claremont, Linda Vista, and Tierra Santa, where we also are the Episcopal Church representation? In San Diego? And then are there other opportunities through social media beyond Southern California? You know, in Southern California and beyond. So we have heard from people that there are churches who are successful in that. And then to write a narrative for the church's mission and let people know where St. David's has strengths, such as being a quiet and reflective place, being welcoming and supportive, child-friendly, and safe for all types of people. And then from that, and this is kind of the key item, is to publicize that narrative consistently and so that our website, our social media presence, our immediate neighbors, you know, through banners or flyers and press releases are all saying the same thing so that they have the same message and it's right at the top of everything that we do. Number three is to strengthen and expand St. David's preschool, renew and prioritize St. David's relationships and connections with preschool parents and families. So these are people who we are already serving and who already know us and like us. And let's find out, what do they need? If they're not interested in coming to church on Sunday morning, is there some other time? Is there some other format? Do they need babysitting? Do they need, you know, a date night? Do they need other kinds of spiritual support that's outside of Sunday morning church? Or is there something that could happen in Sunday morning church that would entice them to join us? So that might mean a different kind of worship service. So in order to address that, work toward full enrollment. Let's make sure that what we have is strong, as strong as it can be. Look at financing, look at accreditation, initiate infant toddler and after-school program, which, you know, is starting to be looked at. It's going to take time. It could take a year to get that all going, to get the facilities and the staffing and the program in place for that and licensing. And then the last item, intentionally build relationships with parents and families to address their needs and create a community, including St. David's Church and preschool together. Next, please. Engage in an action planning process with a facilitator. Next, please. So develop an action plan to use as a guide for staying on track to evaluate how we are doing based on the goals and the programs that we have established or that we have identified and publicized. Engage and commit to a significant reorientation of commitment and energy to the neighborhood, families with children and young adults. And this change and deepening of focus may require a notable reduction in current ministries to focus on new priorities or orient them toward neighborhood needs. So this is where, you know, the food pantry may not come back in the same form that it had before. It may be, let's partner with other groups, CCSA, other churches. We now know that Claremont Lutheran has a food pantry, which I didn't know about. So, you know, let's try to work together and also to try to serve people in our own neighborhood. And then to support all of that with a vision statement and mission statements and goals, objectives, and tasks that are aligned with this recommendation and this philosophy. Next, please. So we all know the church needs roof replacement, which was authorized by the Vestry in this most recent meeting. We need a new HVAC system in the church. We need to update our audio and video so that we can have Wi-Fi and live streaming capability. These are all things that we know about. I'm not going to read through this, but these are things we understand. We're going to have to assign some costs and priorities to them. Next, please. But I will say, going back to that for just a minute, we have a tremendous facility. We have a great facility. It needs some work and we need to look at how we can use it more completely, better, more hours of the day and see if there are any opportunities for, you know, outside groups or new programs that would support our goals. Next, please. Thank you. And then to look at our long-range finances and assure financial sustainability. Next slide, please. And so that we have, we look at how can we rent our space in a smart way? Expand the preschool as discussed. What do we do with our cell tower income? The K-house next door that we own, is there some other way either to use that or to get, you know, a different use out of it? What's the status of our endowment and investments and so on and so forth? We also have, you know, our conditional use permit, which is our permission from the city to operate, has officially expired. I don't think they have, like, conditional use permit police who come out, but we should be looking into that as well. And any other, you know, buildings or facilities that we might need to change to suit our mission. So thank you. Next, please. So we are looking at a new St. David's in 2021. New leadership, transformation of our membership to include more, you know, a focus on families, a change in our neighborhood, which we're seeing with the trolley, with new apartments being built, with young families moving in and changes in our culture. What are those people looking for in their spiritual lives? And how can we provide it and remains the St. David's that we know and love? So, and people still are looking for God to be a presence in their lives and we can serve that. So last slide, then we want to thank the rector and vestry for their trust and encouragement. It's been a great process. It's been very quick, just a couple of months really. And so we're excited to see the next phase of this transformation. Jean, did you have more that you'd like to say? You'll have to unmute, Jean.
Just to thank everyone that has participated both in the town halls and in the people that we've interviewed. And it's been, I think, exciting to hear the hope that people have for things that could be done better and for the strengths that St. David's has. It really brought all of that to the forefront. Thank you.
And Nancy, anything you'd like to say?
What a pleasure it has been to serve with both David and with Jean. Two very energetic, patient, kind, thoughtful people who love St. David's. And we were meeting, David said, yes, we've been meeting for a couple of months. And we were meeting probably two or three times each week over those couple of months. So there was a lot of time and attention given to our recommendations. And of course, they're only as good as, as what you all think are important from your perspective as well. Just going back to number one, and I think this was at the end of Pastor Jocelyn's listening session too, that you're looking for leadership. And here she is. And what can we do to have her here with her family, safe, comfortable and just ready to take off? So thank you, Jean and David, and thank you, St. David's.
And I would say that again, this, as Jean and Nancy have said, this is, this process has left me very hopeful and very excited for our future. So, and we're not starting from zero. We've got a lot of great things.
Exactly. Thank you so much, David and Jean and Deacon Nancy. You have accomplished an incredible amount of work in a short time and very comprehensively. I mean, we cannot underestimate all the amount of people that were part of this process. And I think you've really shown us such a hopeful path for the future coming out of this pandemic that we can really be not only looking ahead, but putting in place the things that we need in order to move forward. So I'm personally and professionally indebted to all of you. And I know the Vestry was really pleased with the work that you did as well. So thank you all. Next, we're going to hear from our fearless treasurer, Jean, about our finances.
Here I am. Thank you very much. And welcome to the treasurer section of the town hall today. But first, thank you to Pastor Jocelyn for the results of the listening campaign. And we've heard those before at Vestry, but just to hear them again, they really are amazing. And of course, the task force, oh my gosh, we heard it at Vestry, but it gets better every time I hear it. So thank you so, so much for everybody's hard work. So I have a set of slides to share with you and some of which you've seen and some of which are new. But using the theme from Bill Myers' beautiful Lenten meditation this morning, they are offered in a spirit of reflection of where we've been, where we are, and where we hope to go, particularly as we prayerfully anticipate and prepare for the arrival of Pastor Jocelyn and her family. So next slide. And you can click through these. It's Pastor Jocelyn. Yeah. So just going through our accomplishments for 2020, we hired a full-time rector. We continued our online worship and programs. We reopened our preschool. And the next couple of slides will remind ourselves that we broke even during the pandemic. Next slide, Pastor Jocelyn. Yeah. You saw these at the annual meeting, what looked like a scary big deficit. Next slide. And you can click through, was actually cured by our paycheck protection money. That small deficit, the negative 841, basically means that this past whole year in 2020, with all that we went through, we were able to break even. So next slide. And again, you've seen these. This is one of my favorites. It's the cash in the bank slide. And on the left-hand side, you see the years and the ending cash. And you see how we steadily built a cash reserve. And I'm going to spend a little time kind of with a decision tree, things that we did, most of this you know. But it's good to remind ourselves where we've been and what we've accomplished and what makes it exciting where we are. If you go to the very bottom of the left, I'm sorry, can you go back? Yeah. Oh, sorry. I kind of skipped. The left-hand side, the very bottom, February 2021, we have, you know, just about $100,000 in the bank. And that was a lot of hard work to get there and to preserve it during this year of COVID. Now we can go to the next slide. This is something I haven't presented before, even though I've had this information. It's just what has happened to our pledges over the past year and why I think we are doing exceptionally well. On the left-hand side, it's going to tell you, starting in 2011, we had 84 people giving. We had on the right-hand side, the amount, just about $300,000. Steadily declines the number of people and the amount of pledging. So you can kind of follow those numbers down till you get to 2021. We have 54 pledges, one more than last year. And if you go over to the graph, the bar graph, you're going to see a little stabilization in our pledges. And just so everybody feels okay, this is not unusual right now in the Episcopal Church. I like to check in with the Episcopal Church Foundation, their research. They find, you know, less pledges, but those same pledges, those pledges are giving a little more. So we've kind of come through this, you know, decline. And next slide is just the same. Okay, no, this is our decision tree. So if you recall the cash in the bank, how low we were in those early years, you saw that precipitous decline in pledges. It's actually about a $100,000 decline from 2011 to 2018. So how are we able to build up our cash? So this is sort of some of the decisions we made. And the way this slide works is these are important vestry decisions for short and long-term financial security. The goal in those years was to increase cash on hand by increasing revenue and decreasing expenses. So this little decision tree, we're going to start on the bubble that's at the top where it says refinance mortgages. Again, most of this everybody knows, but it's sort of fun to revisit and see how well we've done. And then we'll drop down in 2015, we entered negotiations with Verizon, which was a new cell tower income stream. Go up in 2017, we sold the T-Mobile income and we paid off our very large mortgage. It was about $400,000 at the time. 28 dropped down, 2018, we begin to rent the rectory. And you'll see again the cash slide and you'll start to see that those two decisions right there helped us start to build our cash. And then in 2018, we also began to see, receive income from the cell tower. And then of course, the last bubble, the bottom bubble is survive COVID. And honestly, last night I was thinking about that little bubble. And if I did a decision tree for just this year alone, we probably made more decisions this year than those entire years that we've kind of been, been together. So very important year that we've, we've survived and survived, I would say, and not only thrived. And thanks to everybody's leadership and Pastor Jocelyn's incredible leadership, even from afar. So, next slide. And again, just revisiting the cash slide again, you see those years when we had that precipitous decline in pledges. But the interesting conversations were, we wanted to keep the preschool open. We wanted to maintain a full-time rector. We wanted to maintain a full-time parish administrator because we knew the rector could only be better if they have that support and then also the part-time choir director. So we've been able to do all that. So everybody should be patting themselves on the back. And next slide, we'll click through these. So short-term versus long-term savings. Secure short-term savings first. We were able to do that. The vestry guideline was three months of payroll in the bank account. Payroll right now is about $34,000 a month. That's church and preschool. So the hundred grand in there represents about three months. And then diversify some long-term investing opportunities. Now, before we go on to the next slide, they get a little wonky because we're going to look at the balance sheet, but just ignore all the numbers because some people have told me, Jane, oh, don't show me those. So, but it's just to help everybody at a high-level view of a couple of long-term investments that we do have and that we can use and utilize and have in the past. But we'll just touch at a high level. So next slide. Okay, so this is the most recent balance sheet. Don't worry about all the numbers. In the green box, that's just a highlight of our endowment funds. We have two, but you're going to see three funds. And that's because two funds are in what we call a perpetual endowment fund. So just, just a high-level view on those. This fund was started for St. David's in 1989. You're going to see a T-Roe Price and a Dodge and Cox. Those are both like well-established firms, T-Roe 1937, Dodge and Cox 1930. And both are invested in stocks with the goal of long-term capital growth. They have a charter, which is a fancy name for instructions. And then just below that, you'll see a diocesan of San Diego Investment Fund. This was started, well, we got a letter in 2016 from Bishop Mathis about this fund, managed through the Episcopal Church Foundation. This is considered a pooled fund and pooled with other churches. So it's invested with State Street Global Advisors, started in 1978, known for exchange-traded funds. But the point is that those two funds offer us different opportunities. Next slide. But the important thing is, this is page two of the balance sheet. And just very importantly, a gift when it's given to the perpetual endowment fund is restricted. So just so everybody knows, your gift cannot be spent. It's restricted. But we'll kind of, we'll, we'll look into these in more depth and in education in the, in the months to come. But so the takeaway is, these are two different funds. Long-term funds managed very differently, utilized differently, but with same goal, building some longer-term security tools in our financial toolbox. Next slide. So the recommendations coming out of this is just help the congregation understand the difference between those funds and explore ways to increase both of these funds and take advantage of what each has to offer. Next slide. Looking ahead, of course, we have the arrival of Pastor, oh, you took out the doctor part again. I keep saying, Doctor, how's it go Reverend Dr. Jocelyn Hughes? She's, she's just waiting for that. I know. You're, you're, okay. So anyways, arrival of Reverend Jocelyn Hughes and her family, adoption of the task force report along with property assessment report to guide decisions. These are very, very helpful reports for the vestry and our decision-making. And then the new sanctuary roof, which is going to be very exciting and you'll get some updates on that. Next slide. In closing, oh my gosh, we survived the first year of COVID. I call it first year because we are entering a second year and we are, it's going to be different. Lessons learned, certain versus uncertain income. This is very helpful for me as a treasurer and you'll learn more about that in, in the future. And that 2021, we're starting with a strong financial position as we bring Pastor Jocelyn and her family here. So I hope this has been a helpful presentation and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Jean. Again, if you have questions about this, we'll have a chance to have some open discussion in a little bit. But first, I'd like to invite our senior warden, Joy, to tell us about what lies ahead in the next few months.
So you've heard about what all the recommendations are. You've heard about how we are establishing ourselves with our financial stability. So we've been, what are the plans going forward? When the, when we first hit with the COVID issue, the vestry was saying one month at a time, we were looking one month at a time. Then we tried to look two months at a time. And of course, then we went back. But we were, you know, very slowly making decisions and dealing with things on a short-term basis. But now we are feeling really good because we're coming towards it. So we'll give you this six months and then we plan to put this in the Friday Times every week when we can highlight and cross things off so that you're all aware of what's going on. And if things change, because the beauty of a plan is you can alter it. So March is Lent, we all know that. And this is creating, we're working on the, making sure we have the strong financial plan to support all the upgrades. We are planning for modernization of our church office and a refresh. We want to paint it and replace broken items, update furniture, get equipment, get computers that are with the modern times. We're bringing a modern priest to St. David's. We would like to be ready so that she can walk in and go, wow, we're up to date versus saying, I don't know how to operate this equipment. So a March item was the preschool adding an additional classroom, and that has been accomplished. You can scratch that one off. Karen and her team were ahead of schedule. Great job for the preschool. All those prayers that you've said over the years to support the preschool, that's really coming, that's following up. So in April, Easter is going to be here. So look for bunnies. We're going to be working on the education center plan. And so that will be starting the plan, but we're replacing the roof in the sanctuary. And one of the things that we can cross off for March was yesterday, a group of vestry members and David Priest went into the sanctuary and cleaned out everything, the stuff, so that when they work on the roof, any extra dust won't, won't get onto everything and making it ready. Because once the roof is on, that we're going to do a deep clean and get it all nice and fresh and then clean the items that were moved out and put them back in. But it was very interesting. Right now, it is a blank campus. And we'll put some pictures in the Friday Times of what the sanctuary looks like without all the, I don't want to call it junk, but it's stuff. And it's just a beautiful, beautiful space. So, and we did a prayer before we left for the Holy Spirit to, to continue to fill the place. So, but April, we're replacing the roof on the sanctuary, which this is an important step before we can get the heating and air conditioning. Just to make sure you all know that you needed to have the roof. And then we need to do more sealing because the doors are going to have to be sealed. If you've ever stood in the back and looked, you can see there's the bright lights all around going out the doors, which don't work with heating and air conditioning. So we plan to complete the modernization of the office. And then the regather task force is going to get together again to work on our timeline for in-person and figuring out how we're going to address in-person meetings. And Pastor Jocelyn completes her, she keeps calling it a demon, which that sounds terrible. Doctrine and ministry. So that is really exciting for us. Next slide. Who does that one? Is the next slide, so in May, we also planned, we get this, when we're in the sanctuary, we saw extension cords running all kinds of places, which we know, we tend to ignore these things. And we said, you know, we should contact the electrician and have him update the electrical so that where we need an outlet, there's an outlet versus extension cords and rugs covering things. So that will happen, which also is important because when we return to in-person, which someday that will happen, we will also want to broadcast to people because we now have friends. Where are you now, Suzy Kentucky? Or I forget where you are. But there are people all over who are watching us and wanting to participate, or people who are at home and just can't make it. We're not comfortable coming to in-person. So we will continue to live broadcast. But it'll be different than all the tape things. So it will be live, which means we have to have all the things necessary for that. So that's happening in May. June, supporting Pastor Jocelyn's move. And the end of Sunday school year, because our Sunday school team's been working hard, even though we're not seeing it, but their year will end and we need to celebrate that. And then in July, welcome, or before, if it works that way, Pastor Jocelyn to San Diego. And at some point after that, we will do her installation and have a huge celebration. So these are all things that are, that are in the plan. And am I doing the next one, Pastor Jocelyn? Look at this plaque. Her name's on the plaque. We're so excited. And of course, once we got the plaque up is when we realized that we couldn't afford that extra consonant. So she does have an extra N, but we will, we will fix that because we do have enough money to buy her another consonant. So yay, you were officially on the plaque after being with us for a year. Congrats. Hooray, hooray, hooray. And then we also, yay, we also wanted to share the vestry for goals for 21. We also wanted to share the Vestry for goals for twenty-one. First one is to move Pastor Jocelyn and her family successfully to San Diego, which is going to happen. And I know people are saying, what can I do to help? What can I do to help? Pastor Jocelyn has a wonderful Realtor. Natalie Kleinfeldt gave her of someone who will help her. So we don't really need to get in the middle of that. I think the biggest thing to do is to pray. Pray that there is some nice family who gets called to Texas or Florida and is willing to let their house be available either for rent or to buy. So I think if we send all these positive vibes out in the world, that's really what we can do right now. Because I don't know if any of you have house hunted. I know my daughter recently house hunted and she really didn't appreciate me every day calling her and saying, you know what, I just saw a listing. And she would say, Mom. So we want to make it helpful to Pastor Jocelyn and when she needs our specific help, she'll let us know. She has a guarantee that if she says, I need you to drive the streets of this town and look for something for me, that we will activate that. And I know I can trust all of you that when we say that, you'll be like, yeah, we'll do it. But we won't do it until she says, please help, because otherwise we will trust the process, trust what she's doing and help her and her family to get here successfully. We will work on the financial part too. So we'll make sure that that is ready. So that's not something that will, will concern her any more than it normally does because moving is stressful regardless. So. Although I have told the priest family, David and Laurel, that their house would be perfect. I was, we were trying to talk them into, you know, but I don't think that works. So the second goal is facilitate the preschool and their continued safe expansion and growth. And that is something that, as we said, was a recommendation. So we'll continue with that. Facility upgrades, as we've identified in the parish survey, and that was a big, huge document. And we keep ticking off all the things that we're, we're upgrading. Lot of work was done on the K-house that had to be done, done with, things were done with some of the, the different infrastructure. The roof on the parish is, or that is one of them. So there's a whole list of things that we'll be trying to get accomplished that we need to do based on the survey. And of course, implementation of the task force recommendations. So there may only be four goals, but they're huge goals. And we need to accomplish all of them. So we'll ask for your help at different times. But the first thing is just to pray that we make wise decisions and that we are surrounded by the Holy Spirit guiding us as we move forward in all of these things. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Joy. This, it's ambitious, but also having worked with this Vestry and, and leadership through this pandemic year, I know we're up for this and it's gonna feel, it's gonna feel exciting and good because so much hard work has already gone in. So. We're now at the end of our presentation time and I will invite you, if you have a question for the Vestry, for the task force, for me, to please either raise your electronic hand, which you can find at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or you can place your question in the chat. If you prefer to do it that way, I'm gonna stop sharing so that we can see one another. Questions. Okay, Lonnie's raising her real hand. So that's okay too. You're muted, Lonnie.
Okay. Sorry. What other hand do I have?
There, well, at the very bottom, there's a reactions button, which you can put, press and it will give you the ability to raise your hand.
I've been through.
And I'll see it. There's two screens of people. So this just makes it easier for me to see because I can't necessarily see everybody going like this, but go ahead.
Two years of Zooms and I'm just, a year of Zooms and I'm just discovering that.
No worries.
First of all, I thought they were great presentations, really concise and informative. One of the ones that I'm still stewing over a little bit was in your summary of all your things was all the years of conflict at St. David's, I, I didn't know about. And then you also commented a lot about the rumors. I've only been at St. David's, I think, a little under three years. I feel like maybe I've stepped in some of that sometime and not known it, but with these eight personers that have left, if we don't want to get involved in rumors, are we gonna discuss that or? I don't know what, we don't want to do rumors, but I, I don't know how to go with that. And I wonder how those conflicts are still affecting us or how they've affected me even as a newcomer, you know, that. And I'm really sad about the food pantry.
Yeah. I, I, I believe very strongly in transparency and open communication. And as we walked through a lot of that in December, the Vestry, you know, communicated as much as we possibly could. I mean, there is pastoral confidence, right, that needs to be maintained. But I want there to be openness about what's going on. And so as, as quickly and as, as openly as we could, we sent out emails. I wrote about it in the Weekly Times and, and as, and when people have had questions and have come to me with them, I've answered them. So I, I do want everyone to know that I would much rather have a conversation to say, what's going on or is this true than to have, you know, those kind of backroom.
So you'd rather be.
Conversations.
You'd rather me ask you directly.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I'm always happy to do that.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I will say that I actually have heard very little. I've had very little. A few people come and talk to me about it, but, but the Vestry is also available for that and, and we want, you know, we do, we want that openness and understanding so that people get their rumors dispelled. Yeah. That's part of how we move towards health.
Any rumors, but I'm just now hearing about this. So I don't create rumors, but I'd like to. I don't know, know something about people who have left and people I was close to.
Okay. I see there's a question in the chat from Debbie about how long will the preschool continue to use the Mission Center as classrooms? Karen, do you want to address that one? Oh, she did. I'm sorry. I gotta keep reading.
That so much depends on continued guidance from CDC and Health and Local State, state and local health departments around social distancing, just like we, when we go to the market, need to keep a six-feet social distance. It is strongly encouraged that we, if not keeping the children apart six feet, but at least having the space to permit it and to know that our downstairs spaces are licensed for twelve children. And that is far under the six or the six feet of social distancing that is currently recommended. So we would only be able to have eight or nine children versus twelve children in each of those classroom spaces. So then it becomes an issue of fiscal viability with that small number of children per group. So we also need two teachers per group in order that teachers can have breaks and not have multiple staff moving around. So where there's just so much with what's going to happen around continued recommendations, especially from the Health Department. And our bishop has asked us to always be more cautious. Again, to remember that young children, while they might not statistically have huge impact from COVID, that they also are not able to be protected with the vaccine at this time. So we need to continue to guard the safety, not only our staff, but also of the young children that we serve. And right now, the best way to do that is with a space that is larger and that has the ventilation system that keeps them safer. To remember that the Mission Center is the only ventilated building right now on our campus. So that again, in order to guard their health. But with all the plans of looking at the facilities and how to improve the facilities and with the pandemic improving, with the conditions within the pandemic improving. But again, we have to be cautious and still wait. It's still very early on in the vaccination process.
Thank you, Karen. There's also a question about kids now needing to only be separated by three feet. I believe that applied to K to twelve schools in terms of having, when they're sitting at desks, which our, our beloved children don't sit at desks in our preschool. So, so I don't know that that necessarily applies at this point. But as Karen said, she's very well tuned in to, you know, all those recommendations and through licensing and, and we're all keeping our eyes on that very closely.
As well as there's predicted to be information forthcoming from state licensing soon. Again, that's from licensing, not the Health Department. We have to comply with all. And the, and the recommendation from licensing is always to go with the most stringent guidance for local areas. So that's what we have always done. And there's actually going to be a call with state licensing this coming Thursday with impending recommendations expected to come out. Again, we will move forward with the most restrictive or protective guidelines moving forward. As well as we still need to request from the bishop's office any change in operational plan. That the bishop office approved our current plan and in order to change our operational plan, they have to.
Exactly. Thank you, Karen. I see Janet is asking when we can start in-person services outside or inside. That's a great question. And as we said in our timeline, the Regather Task Force will be reconvening next month, probably after Easter, to look at all of that. We've got a lot of construction that's going to be happening on campus with the roof and these other projects, the education center bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not just the pandemic at this moment that we have to take into consideration is also like this, the state of the campus. But we know everyone is eager for this. The bishop just sent out new guidelines that I shared with the Vestry and the Regather Task Force. So movement is happening, change is coming, people are getting vaccines. And so we hope very, very soon that we can do this. But it's, it's going to be a little bit of a balancing act and figuring out just even on our campus, like when it, when it's, we'll, we'll be able to, to be there just from the construction. Twenty, we'll, we'll be together this, this year somehow, some way for sure. Yeah. So is solar electric a consideration in the upgrade? Anne is nodding yes. Would you like to answer that question, Anne?
Yes, our current roofer has connections with some solar companies. And so we will be, once we get the roof on the, on the, on the sanctuary, we are going to, I know Jane is very hot to do this and we all are to make this work. So we need to evaluate the roofs that we have, the other existing roofs, to see if they can support solar where they need to be and so on and so forth. So yeah, there, that is definitely in the plan.
Yeah, I'm really proud of the Vestry because they really are trying to take a holistic approach to these upgrades. That the roof goes with the solar, goes with electricity, goes with the Wi-Fi, goes with the streaming. I mean, like, we're, we're trying to really think like, how can we service this building so that it's going to be what we need it to be for, you know, the foreseeable future and years to come? And, and it all fits together. And so it's gonna be a lot, but it's gonna be awesome. Let's see, is it, I don't see any hands raised. Let me check my next screen. Are there other questions? Okay. Joy has her celebration reaction up. So that's great. Oh, I see Lonnie's hand. Go ahead, Lonnie. I hope you're muted.
From your summary that you sent us, it sounds like a lot of the conflicts are still with us. I, I have no idea because I don't know what they are. And how are those gonna be resolved or addressed?
Well, I, I think, you know, when, when you've gone through rough times, which a lot of folks here have, if you remember my very first slide about how long people have been at St. David's, that a lot of long-term members here, which is awesome. But that also means that the memory is long and it, healing is a process. It's a, it's a, it's a long process. And I know before I arrived, the congregation did a lot of hard work around developing communication strategies and holy manners and how to, how to have those, you know, important discussions and disagreements without it turning into something unfortunate. And I think that, you know, as difficult as this year has been for all of us, that we now have a chance to really live into that, those commitments and covenants and, and to learn a different way, you know? When you've got, when you've gone through something like this over such a long period of time, it doesn't change overnight. It doesn't. And we saw that this past year. But we have to make the commitment and recommit, recommit ourselves constantly to doing it differently and to seeking health and seeking to, to, to live together, to be community together in new ways. And I think, you know, the, the last three months, I've seen people do some really hard work around that. And, and I think that gives me encouragement as your rector that we can have a new future together and move forward together and, and do some great things. So.
Years and didn't know about these conflicts. And this last October, you heard about all of them that were still going on. And so I hear you saying that individually people just need, I, I guess I don't know what I'm walking into or something.
We can talk privately.
Yeah, I, I think we can definitely move, you know, have a longer, more in-depth conversation about that individually. But just for the good of the community, I would say, yeah, I mean, everyone, you know, people that have newly arrived that they don't know is great. I mean, that's a great sign too. And, and shows that, that people, you know, are ready to move forward together. And so it's, it's about stopping old patterns of behavior that, that were not helpful to the community, doing things differently going forward. And, you know, y'all have shown me that we can do that. And, and that's, that's what we need right now. So I hope that at the end of the day, this has been a hope-filled meeting that y'all have been able to see a lot of the hard work that so many people have put in and that God is really opening all new paths for this community and, and giving us the tools and resources that we need to come out of this pandemic stronger, focused and ready. Because as I've said before, I'll say again, the world is different. It's going to be different. Ministry is going to be different. And, and I, I'm excited by that. And I think that we are in the exact right moment to, to go forward and flourish and, and to have an incredible future as a community and, and loving and serving God and our neighbors in our midst. So. It is twelve twenty-seven. Know that this is, as I said to you and all of my listening campaign conversations, this is not the end of the conversation. Your Vestry, your leaders, your task force, we're all here. If you have further questions or, or comments, please do not hesitate to reach out. Seriously, there's no question that's too small or no explanation that doesn't need to be given. And we're all here for you. So. Yeah. So let, let us go forth in the name of Christ, rejoicing in the power of the Spirit. Although I guess we're not really supposed to say that because it's still Lent, but go in peace, to love and serve the Lord.
Bye-bye. Thank you all.
Have a great week, everyone. See you next week for Palm Sunday.